All right, it is 5:46. I'd like to open the Board of Selectmen meeting for today, Tuesday, July 1st. I would like to start by how we always start a meeting, guys, with the Fledge of Allegiance, if that's okay.
What allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all?
Thank you. All right, so for tonight's meeting, kind of a small agenda. We have basically one task tonight. We have two candidates coming in, candidates for our interim town administrator position. And I guess to start, we have our first candidate coming in at 6 o'clock, our next one coming in at 7. Each one will run, Cody, you think about 45 minutes or so. And we'll ask them questions, we'll get some feedback. And then I think the hope, the goal we should have maybe is to come up with some sort of decision by the end of the night, so we can have our town, interim town administrator in place by the end of this evening, obviously pending contract negotiations. Is that safe to say, Cody?
It is, yeah. So we do have an executive session planned for at the end of the meeting, so if you make a conditional appointment, we'll go into executive session to discuss the parameters of the contract.
Excellent. We have some great questions here that we brainstormed, actually Cody helped us out too with a lot of these. Fellas, how do we want to approach this? Do we want to, I see there's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, kind of different arenas maybe? Do we want to have each one of us take one of the arenas and go through each question and kind of rotate through, or do we want to rotate through question to question? How do you guys want to handle?
I'd say just go from group to group.
To group, alright. Anybody have any inkling on any of them, or just you want to just go right down the line?
So I'd recommend Jonathan, it's good, you start, introduce the board, and then it makes sense for you to start with kind of the first step.
Sure.
Then however you guys want to divvy it up, it's fine. But, you know, just an introduction of where we are, where the town is, where the board is, and obviously introduce, you guys can go down the line and choose for yourselves.
Sure. Alright, so I'll take the leadership and experience. Tom, you want to go down to governmental and legal knowledge?
Sure.
Alright. Bill, do you want to do financial management, seeing you're our FinCom guy?
Yeah.
Alright. I'll jump back to interpersonal skills. Operations and oversight, Tom, is that okay?
Yep.
Alright, communication and transparency, Bill?
Yep.
Alright, and then the last two I'll jump on, if that's okay, adaptability and planning. Awesome.
Is there anything you guys don't see on here that you'd like to ask? So it's important they ask each of the candidates the same set of questions. Now, if one of them says something and it sparks some further interest, that's fine, you know, go in and dive more into a question based on that. But generally, we want to have the same questions to start with, and then they may be more based on their responses. And I recommend at that time, so even if, Tom, even if you're asking a question, if the candidate says something that Bill wants to know more about, Bill, you know, jump in, get that information. But is there anything in here that you think, try to just pull some...
We had a question on here about what is your management style. It's not here. It was on the paper before.
Yeah, you did have a management style question. I remember reading it.
Oh, four. Describe your leadership style, how you build trust with staff, fours, anything.
Oh, okay. No, that's not mine.
The double fours, here's double fours.
Oh, two fours.
Oh, sorry about that.
That's okay.
So...
The first four.
Yeah, category one, question four.
Yep.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. You're out of here soon anyway, so. Alright. Excellent. You want to take a recess until 6 o'clock?
You can, is there anything else you guys?
Anything else you want to go? I feel like we're ready to roll. Alright. Alright, we will take a recess until around 6 o'clock, when our first candidate will be entering. So, see you at 6. Flicking meeting for Tuesday, July 1st. Joining us right now is our first candidate for interim town administrator, Mr. Bob Fennessy. Do you like Bob, is that okay?
Bob, I'll go by, yeah.
Okay. Bob, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
My name is Jonathan Seelig, I'm the Chair of the Board of Selectmen. Guys, want to introduce yourselves?
Tom Pratt, a member of the Board of Selectmen.
And you've already met Cody, our town administrator. So first and foremost, thank you so much for coming out. It's a little sticky tonight, but hopefully we won't make you sweat too much here. I guess before we start, is there any questions you have for us here, before we ask our questions of you?
No, as we go along, maybe someone will pop up that. But no questions of...
Off the top?
Yep.
Alright, great. So yeah, if you don't mind, we'll jump right in, if that's okay?
Yep.
And I drew the first draw here. So my section is under leadership and experience. And if you could, Bob, just tell us about yourself. It's an easy one, and why you're interested here in the position in town.
So in leadership and experience, that's kind of where my forte is. I've been throughout my career, starting way back, way back, before I retired, I was a police officer with the MSPCA law enforcement. I was put on the department, statewide organization, special state police officers. I worked my way up from officer to sergeant to prosecuting officer, which I did the court work, which kind of kicked in my mind, geez, I'd like to be a lawyer someday, you know, because I'm prosecuting this, figured I was the lowest paid person in that room, getting in and then doing the prosecutions. So I ended up going to law school later in my career with the MSPCA, got my degree, and passed the bar. And at that time, I became Deputy Chief of the Department. So I was a Deputy Director statewide. So I did that for a few more years, and I thought, well, I just spent $100,000 for a law degree, I better do something with it. My father was yelling at me, and so I did. So I went out, put up a shingle, waited for clients to come, and sat there. And then they started coming. And it's been a good run on that. In the meantime, like you guys, you do something to better your own town. I became a selectman. At first, I went on the Finance Committee to get a sense of what municipal work is like. Then I went on the Conservation Commission, and I did two terms on there. I was on the Cable Advisory Committee. And then I thought, you know, I'm going to run for selectman. I became the youngest selectman in the town of Plainville at that time. Somebody, a 21-year-old, took it recently, but. So I started doing that. I did six years of that while I was an MSPCA officer, and took four years off to go to law school. So I stopped being a selectman then, went to law school, got out, and after law school, I went back into being a selectman, and observing six terms. So I was elected twice against people running on an open seat, and then four times running against me on no contest. So I enjoyed it. I mean, that's where I cut my teeth in municipal work. Like you, you're probably thinking, oh, this would be a great job, you know, doing town administrator. So I went in to become a town administrator in Boylston, small town, 4,000 people. And I stayed there, and before I started my law practice, and then started my law practice. So, over the years, I ended up becoming a professor at UMass Law School, teaching municipal law, teaching animal law, and teaching employment law. And those were the areas of my law practice too, which I enjoyed. I enjoyed teaching. And so I was doing that contemporaneously with all the other things, all these balls in the air, plus having kids and having a family. And it was great, I enjoyed it. Well, it came to, my last town administrative position was Carver, right around the corner. Before that, it was Kingston, down the street. And in Carver, I went in as an interim town administrator. They had an ad for an interim. I thought, you know what, I really loved town administrator in Kingston and in Boylston. I'm going to do that now that I'm semi-retired, I can do that. So I put in for the interim, I got that. And during that interim period, everybody kept saying, you got to apply for the full time, you got to stay. So I foolishly did. I had to be careful, because they're in the same cable committee.
Yes, they are.
So I did, and I loved it there. I loved it. I just didn't want to be committed to 12 months a year of doing the job. And I had some other things going on with family and medical things with family, so. So, you know, I decided to retire out of there. And since that time, I went to, became a senior project manager consultant with Capital Strategic Solutions. And Cody, you may know who they are, yeah. Great organization, so I've been in four or five towns since then, doing various things. The biggest thing that I've done is, in city of Brockton, I was the HR Director for an interim position for two to three months, stayed six months. Again, they asked me, please submit your application. Caveat there, you have to live in Brockton to work there. So, anyway, here I am. I have a ton of background in my management. I have a kind of a collaborative management style, make people feel respected and appreciated for what they do. And I think I learned that from being a selectman, mostly thinking that, you know, we're all here working for the town, for the betterment of town, not for the betterment of an individual person, or an individual company, but for the betterment of town. Sometimes those coincide, and that's great, you know, when it helps the town and it helps the business too, or it helps a person, or a group. So that's kind of where I come from in my management. I look at managing, not managing people, but bringing them on board so that, so they feel respected, and they feel, whether you work for Highway, or, you know, being a custodian, or a department head, or a committee member, board member, or even a volunteer. I mean, you got to bring them to you and bring them into the fold, or else they're going to be bucking you all away. And that's, again, over 40 years, that's what I learned, and that's how I operate.
Oh, it's a great...
I'm sorry it's so long.
No, it's covered a lot.
But it's a long, a long history of...
It's a lot to cover, no, that was great. I appreciate it. And you actually answered, I had a couple more follow-up ones, but you kind of touched on it. Let me see if that one was already covered. What experience do you have serving? I think that's pretty clear. Oh, here we go, here's a good one. How have you managed transitions, particularly in a town administrator role? So where you're coming new to the scene, how is that transition period? I mean, thankfully, we have Cody for another week or so.
Oh, boy.
So how, how do you handle that transition time, you know, before the seat is yours?
So if I came in, the first thing I would do is get a lay of the land, you know, meet the staff here. And short time, and this is what I did in Carver, a short time later, I'd make sure we had a department head meeting to go through what is going on as a group. And then I'd meet individually with all the department heads, and get a sense of what their department needs are, what the issues are, what has to happen. In the meantime, you know, I look at being an interim a lot differently than I look at being a permanent. I mean, a permanent, I'm thinking, you know, three years down the road, and what it's going to be like. Interim, I want to make sure they know that I'm here to support the board and support the staff, and make sure that they know that, that they can count on me to take care of things that come to my attention. So it's not, it's not making major changes in the way things are done, although I got to say, in Carver, I did make some major changes, because they needed to be made. And it was welcomed by both the staff and the Board of Selectmen. So I would do that if there was something that fiery that needed to be done. So that's the first thing. I get everybody in together, get them to know me. It doesn't take long to know me, because I'm very open and very collaborative and, you know, working with people and all that. So I don't think there'd be an issue with, unless there's issues with people, you know. So that's the first thing. That's what I would do for the transition. And then work with, well, Cody won't be here, but work with the board to bring on a really good town administrator for your permanent, because that's the key here. You know, you're going to sign that long contract with a permanent, so. And I've been in your situation as a board member in Plainville when we were looking for a town administrator. I ended up doing the interim town administrator work in Plainville, because we couldn't find one. Fortunately, now, you know, there's a number of us out there doing interim work. So, but the key, you know, is to find the right fit for you guys as a permanent town administrator.
So I'm going to veer off a little bit. You brought up, you know, you like to stay the course essentially, right, as an interim. But you said you did make some major changes over in Carver. Feel free to share any of those changes with us, or...
Personnel issues, so I probably wouldn't, you know.
Okay. And you did mention leadership style. Would you consider yourself kind of an open door policy? Kind of go back in your leadership style and expand on that if you don't mind.
Okay, so my leadership style is to, again, bring everybody into the fold, you know, get them to understand where I'm coming from, so it's not like, you'll do this, you'll do that, no, you're in trouble.
Not a top-down kind of thing?
Yeah, yeah. It's not, we're all, again, we're all for the betterment of the town, and equal. That's how I look at it. You know, I don't think you guys are better than me. We're equal. I don't think I'm better than them. I mean, I think everybody plays a role, you know, in the town, and in town government and governance. And I think that's important, you know, that you play a role, but you still have to be a people person, you know, to be able to get the work done properly, and with vigor, and with, great, Bob, yeah, I'll take care of that. And that's what it's like in Carver. I mean, I left there sadly, because it was running like a top, you know. So, and I suggest that anybody can call any of the department heads over there, or any of the administrative staff, and just talk to them about me, you know, you'll get a good sense of who I am if you need to do that, but.
Thanks, thanks, Bob. Alright, that's all I have here for leadership and experience. Tom, you want to jump onto yours?
Excuse me, so I have government and legal knowledge, so could you touch upon your experience with mass municipal law, open meeting law, and public records requirements?
Oh, public records requirements, so much fun.
Fun stuff.
Fun stuff. So, you know, obviously, you know, you have to have the minutes done in time. I think it's three meetings, or six weeks, or something like that. I don't have it in front of me. But, you know, that's a big thing. And public record requests, it's a bane on every community, you know, because you have to do it, and you have to do it timely. I noticed online that you have, on the minutes, I read all your minutes from February to now.
Nice.
And I noticed that you have Mead and Talaman, Mead Carson and Talaman. And Jay Talaman, have you met him?
Yep, yeah, we met Jay.
So I work closely with him, both in Kingston, and, do you know Federoff? Kate Federoff?
Kate, yeah.
I worked with her in Brockton.
Oh, great.
And so, you know, well, they're a great resource for you. I don't know if you have the one price fits all with them?
So they're not our lead counsel?
No, they're, I think, labor, right?
They're labor, yeah. Brooks and Durensis is our lead.
Okay, and they're good for them too.
Yep, yeah.
Brooks and Durensis is our lead.
Framingham, Onadieck, out that way?
They have, uh, on Onadieck and Boston.
Okay.
Boils and Shiloh, yeah.
Yeah, I know them, yeah.
And then HR, we still have, at the moment, we still have Lighthouse?
Yes, as a consultant.
Yep. Oh, we have, we consult out our HR services, so that's how we're set up.
Okay. So yeah, so I'm well aware of all the laws relating to municipalities. I can understand them, that's a big part of it. You know, a lot of times, town managers can read something and don't understand really what it means and what they're doing, and, you know, but having a legal mind, that I have, I can read something and instantly meander through it and know what we have to do. And, you know, throw it out too. And it worked in Carver, that could save some money for legal fees. So you're not having a town administrator who has to call legal counsel all the time. You know, you have an in-house person who can get to that first level. And then it's up to that town administrator to say, okay, I'm going to call, because this is like the MBTA litigation. That's not something that a town administrator will do. You know, that's something for your legal, you know, your legal concerns.
How do you ensure compliance with state and local bylaws and regulations during a time of administrative transition?
Compliance with the staff?
Local bylaws, state regulation, local bylaws, yeah.
So, so local bylaws are being violated, I would contact whoever the department is that it's violating. So if it's, if it's the wetlands, do you have a conservation agent?
We do.
Yeah. So you have that person get involved, report to me, you know, what's happening. I'd be an overseer of those things, not a firsthand going out and saying, okay, you're in violation. You know, that's for the police, the conservation agent, the building inspector, you know, any ordinance that's on the books. But I think it's important that I know what the ordinances are, you know, so that I can then be the overseer of those. But it's not something that I would enforce myself, if that was the question.
Okay, sure. Okay. Bill?
I have fiscal management. Can you describe your experience with municipal budgeting and fiscal forecast?
Okay, so fiscal forecast. So obviously, being a town administrator, I've done the budgets for every single town. Fortunately, in Carver, we also had a finance director. In Kingston, we had a, we had a finance director, but one who left, and then there was a lot of turmoil on getting somebody in. So you rely on your finance director also to work with you on your finance committee to put together a budget. Now, I know you had town meeting already, so you got the budget in place for this year. Do you have a timeline? And this might be one of my questions. Do you have a timeline of when they start the budget, and would that fall within my realm of...
I don't, I mean, ideally, I don't speak for the whole board, but I think ideally, we'd love to have a full-time candidate in before our budget season kicks in.
Yeah. But in the meantime, I think what I would do is get, get everybody together, start working on their budget. And I know there's financial difficulties here. Financial difficulties in Kingston, and Carver, and...
Everywhere.
Plainville. Even though we have the casino in Plainville, there's financial issues. So you want to have them look at ways, if I put out that we might have to cut 10%, tell me how you're going to do it. And saving staff, and saving services, you know, and see where the, if there's any fat there. I'm sure by now, you're cutting into bone.
Pretty much down to bone, Bob, unfortunately.
I know. So that's, again, I lived all that. You know, every city and every town community has those issues, especially now, after many years of two and a half, and many years of education costs rising, and health costs rising, and you're still locked in at that two and a half, you know. Have you had an override?
So I was just going to ask you, Bob, have you been in a community that's gone through the override process?
Well, Plainville, we had an override when I was a selectman.
Okay.
That, Carver, we haven't. Kingston, yeah, we didn't in Kingston either. Let's talk about it for a police station in Kingston. Never went through, that's why we still have the old police station there.
Yeah, I won't say, there's a possibility for one next year, I think.
But I mean, if that's, you know, while I'm here, you know, to start the ball rolling, to get, I think, do you have a committee or something there?
Well, yeah, we were talking about forming an override committee, just to start kicking tires.
That's good, because then you're pulling from each area, you know. The worst thing to do is pulling out, and it's only one designed for school or something.
Yeah.
You know, you got to have, you got to have buy-in, you know. But, so I've done all the budgets and worked with our finance committee and finance directors and all that, got them on all line. We had, in Carver, I'll tell you real quick, we were going through the budget process in the early stages, September, October, and the finance director said, we have a major deficit. We have a $600,000 deficit. I'm like, what? And if you're listening in Carver, don't quote me on the 600,000, might have been 558 or something.
Turn it off right now, please.
But, you know, and it floored us. I had to bring in all the department heads and say, you know, we have to look to cut deeply. And they were beside themselves, you know. And it turned out, there was an error on some calculations, and that dropped down to like 113,000, which was manageable for a big town like Carver. I mean, you know, we have 16,500 people, 16,500, and a pretty big budget, so. So there was a lot of room to maneuver. Where smaller towns like Plainville, like Halifax, not much room to maneuver, you know, and before you're really hitting something. So that's...
You kind of get to my second question, though.
Oh, I talk too much.
Alright. That's okay. I'll jump down, if you don't mind, Bob, to interpersonal skills. How do you manage, let's say you're the interim here, how do you manage relationships between the select board members that may have different priorities between the three of us?
And that's a good question, because I like, I was on a three-member board.
Yeah.
I like three-member boards, because there's three, you're not dealing with five.
Yep.
Five, there's always so much, it's very difficult with five. With three, and what I did with the five, I would meet with them individually, and talk about their desires, their goals, and, and it got difficult at times, because sometimes there were clashing goals, you know. And, well, Bob, you know, put this through, let's get this working. And, you know, okay, but, you know, if we do that, we're going to have to cut here and take, take out something here, you know. And I'll give you one example, real quick. There was a desire to put in bike lanes from one of the select board members, and, you know, all the town, and, you know. And the cost of that, you think, oh, you just paint in bike lanes. No, you have police details, you have road closures, you have, you know, paint, you have probably overtime on personnel to put it in off hours a little, so you're not, you can't do it in rush hour time either. And doing that would cost a lot of money that we would have to cut from somewhere else. And one select person didn't like that, you know, they wanted to get this done. And another one's like, we're not doing that, we can't do that. We can't cut to have a bike lanes, you know. This is Carver, this isn't Cambridge, or Brookline or something, you know. I'm from Cambridge originally.
People's Republic.
So it's hard, you know. I would, I would meet with you individually and talk, you know, I hear you're a good cohesive board anyway, which is a great thing to hear. So it'd probably be pretty easy for the three months that I'm here.
Yeah. I think, not to toot our horn, we're pretty collaborative.
Yeah.
You know, and I think we, all three of us put our heads together, so. I don't know, hopefully, knock on wood, that wouldn't be too much of an issue. Back to my questions here. Alright, here's a good one, Bob. Describe a time when you had to mediate a conflict between departments or stakeholders, and what was your outcome with that conflict?
Mediate a conflict?
Yeah.
So you're not talking about personnel issues?
I don't know if I'd go personnel, or, well, I'll leave it open to you, though. What do you, a conflict, you had a big conflict, and you fixed it. What'd you do? How'd you do it?
So, in terms of a conflict of interest in personnel, there's always grievances filed, you know, through the police or through, you know, other unions. And a lot of times, the grievances I find, are grievances more that somebody is getting something and they didn't. That they, oh, well, why did you let that person go home at 2 o'clock? You know, because, well, because that person had a need to go home, and a need to be, and that's my call, you know. And, but, but they get into this whole, nah, 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 you know, that, they got that, I want that too, you know. And so working, again, working through them, talking to individually, and saying, you know, if this happens to you, then obviously I'd do the same thing for you. But we're not going to make a blanket policy, because we have to give accommodation to one person, or two people. And then, and that can sometimes work into a conflict, where people stop talking to each other. So I bring them in to my office, have a coffee, and kick back, and just say, look, oh yeah, just, let's just get this out, you know, because the longer you let this fester, it's going to get into the town hall and get into other things. And it festers, well, you know that. So you're going to, you're going to take care of it like that, you know, get them, get them on board. And again, I don't want to keep using that phrase, but, but that's the key. And that's how I do it, and that's how I've done it. I can't think of a, in Carver, it was pretty easy on my capital, capital plan. We had a certain amount of money, and fired upon one breaker truck, fire breaker. Police needed their four cruisers, and this needed that, and there wasn't that much money there. And I brought them all in together and said, okay, well...
Paper scissors.
Yeah, yeah. Say, wait, why don't, no, why don't we talk about, who can go without this year? Well, I'll give up my breaker, I don't need that. I'm going to get my other one renovated or rehabbed. And so, I'll take that off the list. Well, it's $125,000 off the list, you know. So we worked through that way, and get them to, so it's their idea. list, you know, so, so we work through that way and get them to, so it's their idea. And they're the hero, because they pull back, you know.
Have you ever had, this is hypothetical, have you ever had a department say, I don't wanna say go rogue, but a department where you don't feel like they're buying into the, the team collaborative? And how have you handled, let's say, it goes with a whole department, how would you handle something like that?
For a whole department?
Yeah.
It comes from the top, you know, the, from the manager of that department.
Yep.
So I'd first work with the manager to see why they're like that, and, you know, and, and try and break it down, you know, is there one leader in there that needs to come in and, you know, be called to the corporate sometimes, you know, because it's having an effect on everybody? And that's what I would do, I'd bring them in, and, I mean, I, I don't, I don't brag about this, but I've had to fire people, I've had to lay off, I had to, I hire, you know, all those things. It's not fun.
Yeah.
It's not, you know, but sometimes, that's the only way you break that, that tension, that, that bad apple, you know, is, is to move on.
Sure.
And, you know, that's, and, you know, and again, that's the last resort. But it is a resort that, you know, we all have to go through. Now, again, being an interim, that probably wouldn't happen in that short period of time.
You never know.
You know, unless the interim.
Have you, have you watched Halifax?
I did watch one meeting.
Yeah.
Probably watched some more.
Yeah.
So my, I have two questions, this, in this, perfect segue, actually, probably no accident there. Operations and oversight, and I'll just skip down to the second one of the two, to start. What is your approach to working with department heads and ensuring accountability during your tenure? So you touched on earlier about having meetings with department heads fairly early, through the door.
Yep.
Get to know each other. Would you care to revisit that or expound upon that? And then secondarily, how would you assess and approve operational efficiency in whatever short-term style leadership role that you have here?
Okay, so that's a good question. So, on operational efficiency, I'll go with that first. I'd look at the budget, make sure that everybody's in line where they should be. I mean, it's early in this budget season, obviously, it's just, it's the first week of it. But I want a history tour of where they were last year. Did they need money at the end of the year? Did they pull from the reserve? Did they, did they, were there transfers into departmental transfers and other things? To see if they're able to manage that budget with what was allotted. And if not, it's the earlier the better to start making the changes on the budget, on, on, to get that operational efficiency. And I like that word. I'm gonna use that someday.
Oh, it's not, don't even say that much credit.
It's a trademark, right? So, but I think, you know, that's, that's how I would do it, is to make sure that they're on line where they're going as we get into August, as we get into September, maybe October, you know. By then, we'll have a handle with the first quarter of where they stand and what they might have to do. I mean, they may have to furlough somebody if, if they're heading out to a deficit for the end of the year, you know, so. And what was the other?
Well, you kind of touched on it earlier about your through-the-door style with department heads. The official question is, what is your approach to working with department heads and ensuring accountability during your tenure?
Okay.
So you mentioned early on, you meet with the department.
Accountability on their department, to make sure that they're overseeing their department, because one person can oversee all departments every day. You know, we, we hire department heads to do that. That's, that's their job, you know, is to manage their department. When it comes to my level, there's an issue, something there that came to my level, that's not getting managed by the manager. So I would work with that manager again, and guide him or her, and work with him or her to see, to manage that department itself. Yeah, and I think I talked about that earlier.
You hit it.
Yep. These are good questions.
Next one is on communication and transparency. So how do you communicate with residents, boards, and staff to maintain transparency in public comments?
So, every meeting, I see the town administrator does a town report, right? I don't know if you have a town report that goes online, like, you know how you see those nice three-page things that people have time to do? But I think that's one way, is getting things out. We have a Facebook, we, you have a Facebook page, right?
Yep.
Yeah. So getting it on a Facebook page, too, of things that are, that are going on, so that the public has a sense of what's going on in town, and doesn't hear from Joe or Mary or something, and it gets skewed, you know. I, I think that's important, you know, to get that out that way. That's one way. I would give a, a town administrator's report. I've always given kind of a lengthy one, because I'm somewhat verbose, and I like to cover a lot of things, you know, so that way it doesn't come back and with questions like, what, what, what did you do on that? Well, I just, it's in my report, you know, so. So I would do that. I would give you guys a, kind of a in-depth report of what's going on, so that you know, because you're the mouthpiece at the meetings, you know, the, people listen to you, they, they don't often listen to the town administrator or town manager, they wanna hear from the board, you know.
And how often, how, you know, given your, given the interim status, how, would that be a monthly report, or something like that, give or take?
Yep. And just to, to touch base on that, Bob, we mentioned like Facebook and social media. Do you view that as a bulletin board, or would you look to actually interact with people on the social media world?
I think it's important to do it as a bulletin board.
Yep.
Just to put out there, because you don't want, with, with social media these days, you know, it changes, then you gotta pull it down.
Yep.
Because people are putting things on in appropriately.
Yep.
And, you know, they got their own websites that they put that stuff on, you know. We learned that from the Karen Reed trial, right? There was no accident, there was no accident, there was no accident. So, anyway, yeah, that's, I would, I would keep it as, as, I think that's what it is now.
Yep.
And that's what ours are, you know, in Plainville.
The next one is on, what is your approach to handling public inquiries, media, and public criticism in a small town in San Francisco?
My approach is to be upfront with them, unless it's something of personnel and confidential nature, is to get it out from my words, or your words, rather than have somebody else say something, and it gets, it gets its own legs and becomes, you know, this big thing in town. So, so I've always worked with the media, in Kingston, and in Carver, I did routine meetings on, on cable. And I probably would do that here, and I don't know if I would in the short term.
We had Cody's Corner for a while.
Yep. He does, oh, you do, you have one?
Cody's Corner, yeah.
Coffee, Kingston Coffee and Conversation.
Oh, there you go.
That's, that's.
Gotta love the alliteration.
Yep, I know, you know.
It's all about the alliteration.
Fun.
All right, my next section here is adaptability and planning. So, Bob, I know you've been an interim, you know, multiple times in multiple different positions. How, how do you, how quickly can you get up to speed, you know, here in Halifax, especially where you kind of have to hit the ground running?
Yeah, and I'm ready for that. I mean, you know, it's only been, well, it's March, I think, last March, April, when I left Carver. Shortly thereafter, I went to Brockton. Been there since, for six months, so. So it's only been a couple of months since I've been out. I, I, that's, I, I, how long would it take me? It'd take me a week, you know, I mean, nothing, because, because I know the, I know the work, you know, and the game, and, and I know there's issues, and, you know, and it's just getting all that. I've always been able to compartmentalize things in my brain, you know, that this is this, and this is this, and this is this, and I have to do that. Again, that might be my legal background. So, so that's easy for me. Shouldn't be a concern for you.
And I know you mentioned before, you're interested strictly in the interim TA, not the full-time, but I will ask you about availability. You know, it's a fluid situation. We, we could have a knockout candidate come in for the full-time gig this month.
Yep.
It could stretch on a little bit. I don't know what your availability window is for us.
It's, it's till the end.
Till the end.
Whenever you want to end.
So goes into, say, October?
If it goes to December.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, and it's funny, Carver advertises a six-month interim.
Wow.
They didn't, that's how they advertised, that's what drew me in.
Okay.
You know, like, okay, I'll get my hands here, and, you know, I'll be in for six months, and, you know, I like that, you know. So, I don't know if you'll get somebody in three months. It's a, it's a lot, you know, it's a lot to go through.
Sure.
And I, I do wanna say that in September, we, we have a vacation to the Greek Islands that
Nice.
We put off in 2021 during COVID, we were supposed to go. So, so that's in September.
Okay.
But, right after Labor Day.
Okay.
So, but, you know, that shouldn't be a problem by then, for me to just even take away and then come back and continue, you know.
If I could just ask a question, kind of piggybacking on that a little bit, just to double check, in, in your cover letter, you mentioned 20 to 38 hours per week for the duration.
Yeah.
What does that look like? Is that a four-day, four-days-a-week kind of thing?
So that's what I'm thinking, yeah. What, what showers here on Fridays?
So we're closed Fridays.
Closed Fridays.
Yeah, so it would be four days, you could hash out those hours.
And what times the hours for?
Well, we have, it kind of changes depending on the day. So Tuesday is our late day.
Yeah.
Tuesday, we're here till, what are we, Cody, 6:00, 6:30 on Tuesdays? And the rest are 4:00. 4:30, sorry, thank you. And then I guess part of that, too, do you see yourself attending meetings at night? You know, you have that availability of, you know, FinCom, although most of our FinCom is Zoom, so there's that. But if you did have a, a need for, for popping into a meeting at night, you think you'd be available there as well?
Of course, did that my whole career.
Okay. All right.
I like being, I like being away.
No, I know.
Oh, careful.
Honey, I didn't mean that. Yeah, your family's watching, too. All right, I think, guys, anything else for Bob? Is there, again, I know I asked you at the beginning, it's probably unfair to ask you right out of the gate, but is there anything else you have for us about Halifax, about the board, about what we're expecting?
So I, I, you know, did my research.
Yep.
You know, as I should. And I got a good sense of the board, I got a good sense of the issues with NewGen and MBTA and other things that are going on here. Sunday, my wife and I came to Halifax, we drove around and stopped in a few places and just meandered through. And, and again, when I was, way back when I was with the MSPCA Law Enforcement, a number of the offices lived in Halifax. There's Bill Curran, who was, became the chief of the department, he was in Halifax. Walter Kilroy, he became the chief of the department, he lived in Halifax. Don Matheson, he was one of the corporals, he lived in Halifax. So I was always down here as a captain, because we would have meetings and come down and see, you know, get together and all that. So I feel comfortable with Halifax. Feel, and in fact, I, I, I applied to another town, had an interim, in Paxton, and they called me for an interview. But I pulled out of that, because I'd rather be in this area. I'm comfortable with Kingston, with Carver, with Plymouth, my daughter lives in Plymouth. And they just had a baby girl for us.
Oh, congratulations.
I'm, you know, I'm one of, my third grandchild, but first for them. So, we go there a lot, so, like my wife was saying, oh, well, I can go babysit while you go to work. I said, yay, what about me? I wanna see her.
It's a great little town, it's, the people are great. We just had our fireworks over the weekend.
Yeah.
They were terrific, so. It is, it's a great little slice of Americana, I love it.
That's what it's got, it's got that feel.
Yeah, it does.
You know, that little town feel. And I hate to say, Plainville used to have that.
Sure.
But then the casino came in, and, you know, and this came in, and that came in, and now they're building these big box storage units all over the place near us, and, you know, it's different.
Sure.
It's a different feel.
Sure.
But the casino bought us a new town hall, beautiful town hall, a new police-fire-station combination, zero for the, for, for the people.
Yeah, but how much of your paycheck does it take every week? That's the question.
That's true. That's true. Yeah, we have to fill it with new fire trucks, and new police cars, and new people, yeah, yeah.
Oh, great. Well, Bob, it's been awesome to meet you. I appreciate you coming in.
Me too, you know, I, I hope I'm chosen.
Yeah.
I think, if you choose me, I think you're getting more than one person, you know, you're getting a legal mind, you're getting a HR mind, you're getting a TA manager's mind, and, and, and especially again, somebody who is a personality that, and somebody who's not gonna leave because they applied for another job and it came through.
Yeah, right.
Well, permanent one, bye Halifax, I'm dumping you, I'm going elsewhere, you know, because I got this job. So, so that's what's good about being an interim, if you're a true interim, you know, you're, you're doing the job and for the municipality, you know, help the municipality get through that interim phase, and then, then you, you move on. And they, they move on with their new town administrator. So, so I hope I'm chosen.
No, I appreciate your time. Before I let you go, though, Cody, I, I know you're up here, any, any questions you have for Bob at all, whatsoever?
And when, when's your last day?
July, but, you know, what, like I've said to the board.
But I know where you are.
I plan to go anywhere.
We're getting his phone number.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wanna make sure that the transition is good. It's a great group of department heads and staff as a whole here. I think if you look at where the town was two and a half years ago, to where it is now, it's not even, it's not even close to the same period. The culture has totally changed, all positive. The culture is different, the climate is different, and, and it's not because of me, it's because of the team that we have.
Oh, you had a little bit to do with it, too.
But it's because of the team, I think it's just, like you said, the collaboration is, is key, so. But if selected, I'm a resource for you.
Awesome, yeah.
Reach out, happy to meet, and anything I can do to help with transition.
Great, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Bob, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for coming in. You're shaking, I'll shake you again, that's all right. I'll shake you again. Great meeting you, Bob.
Thank you.
And just so you know, Bob, we hope to make our decision this evening.
Okay.
So it shouldn't be, we're not gonna string this out as, you know, any longer than we have to, so as soon as a decision's made, we'll reach out and let you know, one way or the other, as soon as we can.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, no worries.
Cam's been very nice.
Yeah, great. We've got a good crew.
Yeah.
We really do.
All right, see you later.
Take care.
Thank you.
All right, so we have a little bit of time before our next candidate. Cody, is it okay to recess for a little bit, or?
Yeah, we have a cop server for some.
Yeah, maybe, I wanna give you a nice parting gift on your way out the door. Yeah, so we'll take probably about a 15-minute recess.
Straight that way.
15-minute recess, it is 6:44, so right around 7:00 for our next candidate, and we will see you guys then. All right, let me just reopen the meeting. We were in a brief recess, so I'll just officially reopen the board of selectmen meeting at 7:05 here in the Great Hall. We are continuing our interim town administrator interviews, and joining us right now is Mr. Ari Sky. Ari, you met the board here, you know Cody, familiar? If it's okay, we'll jump right into questions.
Please.
Before we get to that, is there any you have for us off the, off the cuff, or would you like to maybe wait towards the end of that?
I don't wanna, I don't wanna, I don't wanna presuppose what you're gonna cover, so.
Absolutely, sure, I totally understand. All right, so first one's an easy one. Kind of tell us about yourself and why you're interested in this position here in Halifax.
Okay, great. So, I've been involved in government for my entire career, since I graduated from college at Brandeis in the late 80s, worked on Capitol Hill for a little bit, and then went back to grad school, got a master's in public administration, and pretty much my, rest of my career pretty much in the local government. Focused mainly on finance, but also management here and there. I was a borough manager for a small town outside Philadelphia. Recently, I was a town administrator for Lakeville. I've been the CFO for, for New Bedford, and so on. And I, it's work that I enjoy, I've committed my entire career to it, and I hope I enjoy it. And the, the, when I'm hoping to, when, when I understood, when I learned that your position, that you were looking for an interim town administrator, is a good fit for me, I, the position I have in, or had in Watertown recently got eliminated by the city council. It was just, these, are basically, the city manager proposed, proposed my, proposed continuation, just the city council decided that they want to force a reorganization for, for various reasons, I'm not sure what, but it was not performance-based. And my, my supervisor and the city manager will be happy to talk to you if you're looking for reference or information. So I'm kind of, I'm pointing out where I'm, where I'm available, I'm looking around a little bit. What appeals to me about an interim TA position in, from a generic standpoint, is that since I am, this all came on kind of suddenly, it gives me the opportunity to kind of, you know, still do some good work, but also take a little time to kind of figure out, you know, where I wanna, where I'm myself for this part of my career, and what I want to do next, and it seemed like a good, a good kind of, good bit of synergy. where I want to, where I myself for this part of my career and what I want to do next, and it seemed like a good, a good kind of, good synergy and good fit that way. Uh, so, um, when, um, uh, when Bernie Lynch mentioned to me that, that Halifax is going to do the transition, I said, I mean, I can help out as far as the interim goes.
Yeah.
Um, I, um, uh, as you, as you look at my resume, you'll see that I have a, a long experience, probably more heavily towards the financial side, but, um, but, but, you know, I have, I have worked in local government in all aspects in Massachusetts, and I'm certainly familiar with small-town government and what it requires and how that, how that works, my recent stint in Lakeville is probably relevant in that respect. And, um, uh, you know, we're coming into a, I think we're all coming into a very challenging period right now.
Hmm.
Um, the state has passed a budget which, um, well, they trimmed it back a little bit in the conference committee, but they're, they're really not, it's, it's really not a budget that's structured for, um, the kind of cuts that Congress is talking about right now when it comes to Medicare, Medicaid. So, um, you know, it seems to me that you, you, you have a potential vulnerability here in this period when you have an interim TA where you could get hit with nine C cuts, or you could get hit with some type of retrenchment forced upon you. I mean, you, you're, I believe, uh, between chapter seventy and unrestricted age, probably about ten percent of your budget, ten percent of your revenue. So it's a, uh, it's a fairly sizable portion. Um, and that's the kind of thing I've dealt with, um, in my, in my prior positions when I was in, uh, um, most relevant would probably be a position in Fauke County, Virginia, in the, in the two thousand eight, two thousand twelve, thirteen. Um, that was all during the two thousand eight crash, and, um, I started there in September of two thousand eight and had to go through a process right where I started eliminating about thirty-five positions. It was ugly and terrible and, you know, people weren't happy with the new budget director and it was just kind of, kind of challenging. But, um, but, but it is, there, there is, there is a method to that process that you can go through to try to kind of minimize the service impact, figure out what, what your, what your, your points of least pain are. Um, it's always going to be a matter of sort of finding the least pain, because there's always going to be pain, because these are people's lives you're dealing with. And, um, and, uh, you know, I think it's important for, for you as the board selectman to kind of feel comfortable that you have staff on board who's capable of helping you sort of navigate through that. Um, I don't know that's going to happen, but I think you should think about what if it does? You know, make sure you have the right people there to do that. Beyond that, I have, um, a great deal of, uh, experience in developing, um, some management structures and maintaining, maintaining processes. Um, I would, you know, the thing that I'd like to be able to do for, for you all is to create a situation where you're able to, um, transition to the next person and, um, not have like stuff, things backed up, you know, piled up, things like that, you know? Um, not necessarily new initiatives, but kind of just keeping the train running properly. Um, this is a good time for you to be going through this transition, other than this, with, with the process of the federal government in terms of this, in terms of your annual schedule. Um, I mean, you have fall town meeting coming up in five months, something like that, four months?
We don't do a, we don't do a fall town.
We just do spring. Well, then that's really good.
Yeah.
Um, I know you've talked a lot about needing to look for, look at an override for twenty-seven.
Yep.
You need to prepare for that.
Yep.
That's, you know, again, that's another example of where you probably want to look for somebody who you know can handle things for, for on the financial side.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, uh, while still being a decent manager, knows how to work with his people. And I, I certainly showed that ability in New Bedford where we built a, uh, a back, a business operation team from scratch. Um, I was the first CFO that New Bedford ever had, and they had been in a structure like that before, so, so went on a little bit there.
Oh, no, that's okay, that's all right, we kind of, we locked you out and then peppered you with questions, so, I mean, that's, it's completely on us. Um, so talk to me again, I know you, you have a, a very varied resume. Um, experience town administrator-wise and maybe lessons you've, you've learned through your town administrator specifically experience?
Mm-hmm. So, um, the challenge that I found as a town administrator, both in Italian Pennsylvania and all as in Lakeville, is the importance of being able to, you, you kind of have your head, not, not, not just on a swivel, but kind of up and down at the same time as well. You're managing up and managing down and managing sideways, and you have to kind of think a little bit ahead about, um, what the implications of whatever's happening mean to you. Sometimes that means that your staff is going to have a narrow focus and you need to kind of be able to broaden, you know, take that, take that narrow focus, which is understandable because that department, they're dealing with whatever, whatever it might be. And, um, but make sure you're, you're able to kind of work those implications. Thing I found in, um, in Lakeville and in Yaden, actually in New Bedford as well, was important, um, uh, uh, aspect of that, of the job, any job, senior management job like that is communication. And, um, just, you know, it's, it's, it's not, it's not your job to make sure that, um, that you, that, that you know everything that's going on, it's my job to make sure that you guys know what's going on. And, um, it's, it would be, you know, the town administrator, interim, interim or otherwise, responsibility to make sure that, you know, that you feel well-informed, you're not surprised. Um, the, 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 sort of the cliche I always use, is my staff, coming, whenever I'm coming into a position, first thing I say to them is that, no surprises. Bad news is fine, I don't love it, but if I get bad news, it's fine, but I want to hear the bad news from you, I don't hear bad, I don't want to hear bad news about you from somebody else.
You won't be surprised.
And, um, and that's, that's, that's really important, so, you know, maintain those lines of communication, which is, you know, uh, an organization's like a garden, you have to really tend it, until it and, and, and nurture it. And, um, if you don't have that ma, that management, it's really good that you've had it, that you're putting an interim TA in place, because if you don't have that kind of churn going on in that process, regular staff meetings, conversations, check-ins, things like that, then, um, things calcify, and the organization becomes stove-piped and becomes, you know, mo, most people, most people are introverts, most people kind of want to sit down there and do their job, they have to be kind of coaxed out and encouraged to get, to, to, to talk, to, uh, to, to be proactive with information and so on.
Talk, talk to me if you can, Ari, about the, the transitional aspect of this job, where you're, you're essentially kind of have to hit the ground running and get up to speed as quickly as possible, how, how adept you feel like you are at, you know, that kind of challenge?
I think that aspect is similar to other senior management jobs, the only difference is that this one has a time limit. And, um, and it's also, you know, you, you want, you want it to be less a footprint and more of kind of a corridor.
Hmm.
To kind of like, you know, move the, keep the organization moving through to get to wherever, to the next phase. You want things laid out well for the next person. Um, and, uh, that means, you know, um, as I, as I implied before, regular communications. Um, I, one thing I would do initially, rough top of the bat, is make sure that I, that I, that I connect and, and, and meet with all of the department heads, we don't understand what we're, we all understand kind of what, what's going on and what, and what issues they have. Uh, of course, I'd be talking to Cody on the way out, and probably after he leaves too, about, um, what, uh, you know, what, what to look out for, what did you, things to look out for. Uh, and, um, and, uh, and also keep an eye on kind of the calendar. Um, I, um, I know the state just passed a budget, which is kind of a miracle, they passed it before July one. Uh, first time in ten years, is that right, something like that? Um, but the, um, you know, I, I don't have confidence in, in the staying power of that, of those numbers through, through the year, given what's, what seems to be happening in Washington. So, um, you know, given all that, sort of being aware of what's going on, um, I made it a habit in my, um, all of my prior positions, including Watertown, to, um, uh, have good connections with legislative delegation to understand, you know, so I can really understand what, what's happening. And, and in Lakeville, I was very, you know, we were lucky in Lakeville, we had Mike Rogers as our senator, um, who was, what, probably the second most important person in the Senate? So, um, so we really knew what was going on, he, he was, he was very straight with his, with his, uh, with his constituents. Um, I would, you know, I think, is it Brady here, is that right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, um, it would, you know, I would imagine needing to build the same kind of relationship, um, and, um, and, and just, just sort of keep that, 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 that chain of communication going, um, line of communication going. So that, um, if things are coming, I don't hear about, you know, nine C cuts in the newspaper or the press conference, I say, yeah, yeah. I have the, the member say, yeah, hey, this is coming, and I tell you guys, hey, this is coming. And so we know, you know, maybe, maybe we get a couple of days notice or whatever, but we kind of know something's coming.
Yes.
So, yeah, yeah.
No, I, I feel like I get a really good grasp on your, your financial acumen, seems very, very impressive. I want to switch gears a little bit to leadership style.
Mm-hmm.
Um, if you're named the interim town administrator here, how would you describe, um, your leadership style here at Town Hall?
Um, it tends to be collegial, um, I liked, you know, I, I, um, I, I like to, I want the staff to feel like they can talk to me and, and, and come to me with issues that they may have, and, um, and that they're, they're comfortable doing that. Um, because I've seen situations where staff isn't comfortable doing that and things get bad for everybody. Um, I think that the workplace should be a enjoyable place to be, and, um, that doesn't mean, you know, kind of just futzing around. It, it mean, but it be, it means, you know, having, having a workplace that people feel, you know, motivated to work in and comfortable working in, and they feel like everybody's got each other's backs and so on. Um, I've been in, I've worked in office, in work environments where, you know, where it's kind of everybody in the foxhole together to, um, everybody out, everybody, everybody, you know, out for themselves.
Every man for himself, yeah.
And, um, I prefer A to B, and I think it's better for the organization as well. Um, in the long term, that's what keeps an organization healthy and, and functioning. So, um, I would do what I can to facilitate that, and that would be, you know, very basically, it means, like I said, regular, regular check-ins with, with the, you know, in, in Lakeville, I had check-ins with my department heads every other week. We generally did like every other week with the check-ins, and then we had staff meetings and then we can between, something like that.
Department heads.
So every week I'm talking to somebody at least, that doesn't mean I'm only talking to them then, it just means that that's what we had, that we, you know, we were sure to have formal times in there, so if things got crazy, we always knew we had a standing time. And, um, you know, I, I don't like to sit around my, I don't like to be the kind of person that's kind of stays behind his desk all the time. I'm, I'm out there and kind of going around office to office, making sure everybody's doing okay, checking what their issues are. Um, I'm aware that we focus a bit on finances, but, but, you know, I also am aware of, you know, the issues when it comes, especially when it comes to a, a small jurisdiction with, with rural interests, you know, and a lot, there are a lot of similarities between Halifax and Lakeville in certain ways. Um, so I'm familiar with some of the, um, you know, some of the, the development issues and, um, you know, preservation land and so on, that, um, that are all, you know, they sort of play into this as well.
Hmm.
Um, you know, not knowing too much about how your planning board functions and that kind of thing, but just kind of, you know, in general, trying to keep that train running.
Great, great, well, that was my leadership and experience section, Tom, a couple of questions?
Yes, I have a government and legal knowledge, uh, just two, two quick ones. Um, what is your general experience with Massachusetts municipal law, open meeting law and public records requirements? Probably something that you've had, at least some experience.
A, a lot, sometimes more than I'd like, but yeah, um, you know, open meeting law is, um, uh, Massachusetts open meeting law is pretty aggressive. And, um, you know, there are people out there, there are, there are private, there are actually private parties out there that are, you know, making sure that you're doing it right, and we'll, we'll get you if you're not. Um, so you have to be aware of that, and the lesson you want to have is embarrassment for the organization or the board. Um, so I'm, I'm pretty well-versed in open meeting law, is your counsel KP or do you have some, who's your?
We have, uh, well, our general is Brooks and Durensis.
Okay.
And then our labor is, uh, Toleman and Mead.
Okay, yeah.
Uh, and then we contract out for, uh, for HR as well.
Okay, so it's, it's, it is, that's a little out of pro of nothing, except that it's useful to make sure that you have that relationship with, um, your, with your legal counsel in case things come up. Um, you know, uh, especially when it comes to, um, uh, information requests. Um, I have, I, I do not hesitate if I get asked a question for, if I ask some open-ended request to talk to counsel about how he should be structuring that response and clarifying. Um, is your clerk the, uh, your records officer or who's your?
Is it?
Or is it?
It's town administrator.
So you, so you're the records officer, okay, okay.
You'd be wearing that hat.
That's fine, that's fine, yeah, that's fine. Um, Lakeville, we had the clerk do it, but it, it's totally fine. And, um, the, um, uh, so I'm very familiar with the requirements of OML.
Okay.
Um, sorry, yeah.
What about, what about ensuring compliance with like local bylaws? Bylaws are a hot topic around here, local bylaws, state regulations, you're familiar with, you'd familiarize yourself with those bylaws and?
Yeah.
And work towards, uh, and how would they, how would that look during the transition?
Um, well, I would, um, want to ramp up, being sure I, I, you know, have a working knowledge and understanding. Um, probably, um, have conversations with Cody as well as the department heads about what might be hot topic issues right now. Um, and, um, and then just make sure in general that I'm familiar with requirements of the bylaw, bylaws. Um, I don't believe you have a charter, right?
No.
You don't have a charter, you don't have a charter, so, um, so it's, it's pretty much all the bylaws. And, um, yeah, that's, that's, that's the same thing we had in Lakeville, it was all by.
Just a quick question, you mentioned, this is kind of branching off on a different topic, but I'm just curious, borough manager, back in Meaden Borough, is that similar, is that a similar job as a TA, is that all related?
Borough manager, very similar, yeah, I mean, it's a structure, Pennsylvania government's structured differently. Pennsylvania government, the boroughs, you have an elected mayor and you have a borough council.
Okay.
And the mayor does not chair the council, the mayor, but the mayor runs the police department. And, um, the council runs everything else, but when they have council meetings, they all meet together.
So like with open meeting law, every state's different, but you, your experience in open meeting law, municipal law, that extends as far back as the borough manager?
It's very different back then, Pennsylvania's also very different, Pennsylvania, Pennsylvania, it's, um, uh, I don't know if it's changed, I think it's changed some since then, but, but in general, Pennsylvania is, um, a lot more permissive.
Got it, okay.
Towards locality.
Got it.
Yeah.
Okay, Bill?
My topic is going to be financial management, uh, can you describe your experience with municipal budgeting and financial forecast?
I've been doing that my entire life, you know, I, I, so I started, uh, my career after grad school um, in Arlington County, Virginia, as an analyst for, um, the, as, as the, the management and budget analyst for the, um, Department of Public Works in Arlington. Um, so I started as a department analyst and that, and there I was just preparing their budget, the capital plans and all that stuff, working that through the, the, the budget office, because it's a large, it's a large government, and, you know, and so on, and, um, actually, let me go back a little bit before that, I, when I was in grad school, I remember asking my, uh, my department chair, what do you think I ought to go into? And, and I'd done well in the, in the stats classes and finance classes anyway, and he said, you really ought to go into budgeting, because if you go into budgeting, you'll touch on every part of the organization, you'll see everything, and he was right. So, um, so that, that, so, so I started with Arlington, that was, that was, that was one example of that. Um, I became a borough manager in Yaden, that was, um, uh, an interesting challenge of, of an organization, had some issues. Um, uh, went back to, came back to Virginia, maybe because we wanted, we felt Virginia was home at the time. And, um, uh, worked for Loudoun County and worked up through their budget office. And Loudoun County is in, you know, there I was, I was in the central office, and if you know anything about sort of Northern Virginia, Loudoun County is an extremely fast-growing county, at the time was one of the fastest-growing in the country. When I started there in nineteen ninety-seven, they had a hundred twenty thousand people population. By the time I left in two thousand eight, the population was about two hundred and seventy thousand, and it's now, it's now almost half a million.
Wow.
It, it just, you know, they, they had a CIP that consisted of over thirty schools, just, just massive. During that time though, we managed to get them to AAA, you know, to AAA bond rating, so I mean, it's a, and I was part of that team. So I kind of, you know, I, I, I learned a lot through that process about, um, not just budgeting, but kind of sort of managing your information delivery and, and how you handle that. Um, uh, during my time in Loudoun, I also became an expert on, um, your performance measurement and management planning and things like that, and that was all stuff that we, that we, that we brought into, uh, to Arlington and, and, and sort of accelerated. Um, after Arlington, um, I was the director of management and budget in Fauke County, which is a neighboring county, but small, a little smaller, but it was more senior position. And then, um, the job became open after five years later in New Bedford, we chose to give up, back up to New England, and there I was the first CFO the city ever had, and there I, I had to build, I mean, it was little, they'd never had a CFO before. At the time, they, they had a budget at the time that was over about three hundred million dollars, um, it's closer to five hundred million now. And, um, everything was stove-piped, you know, they had, they had auditors, you see the auditor's office and treasurer's office and assessor's office, and, you know, now the, nowhere do the, do they meet, you know, except maybe in the mayor's office. Uh, so there's no kind of sort of strategic management of the, of the business operation. And, um, that was, that was my job, we, we, we built a lot there over that, over the years that I was there, so. Um, so, and then, you know, obviously in, in Lakeville, you know, so I've been, I've been doing, so I, the point is that I've been doing, I'm working on budgeting and, and reporting and structuring and forecasting and all those things for, you know, decades.
Okay.
What steps did you take to address any unexpected financial challenges during your interim tenure?
Well, I think we alluded to that a little bit. Um, you know, I am, I am concerned about, um, where things are going to head in terms of, um, the state budget and hence indirect, well, federal budget, state budget and indirectly local, and then what, how that rolls down to local budgets. Because, you know, we all know what rolls downhill, and it just kind of, you know, it just, it's just, it's inevitable, it's gravity. So, um, you know, I, I, I just, um, you really, really need to, it'd probably be advisable for the, for the organization to kind of, maybe, you, you don't want to cause panic in the organization, but you, you do want to have everybody kind of thinking about, you know, being austere and, um, and, you know, being prepared for the possibility, maybe some retrenchment, and how are you going to go about doing that? So that, so that people aren't, you know, so at least you're not having people's kind of head, world turned upside down in a shocking moment. Um, and, yeah, I, I, I think that's probably an advisable stance regardless, especially for an organization that depends on state revenue to a reasonable degree, which you, you know, there, there are places that depend on it more than you do, my, my former employer in Bedford certainly does. Um, and there are places that depend on less, my former employer Watertown probably less. So, um, it, it, you, you guys are somewhere in between. Um, so it, it's a, um, and then there's of course, not only that, but sort of the, you know, I think, you know, the economic picture's kind of uncertain right now, in terms of where things are going to go, and what that means is, you know, And what that means is, you know, I think everybody's seeing slowdowns in building permits and development. Um, and that obviously has an effect. Um, you are already in a position where you've talked about needing to have an override for twenty, or plan for an override for twenty-seven. That means you really got to start, you got a couple of things you got to do. You really got, you, you kind of, you have a, you probably have a sense of what that's going to look like more or less. But, you know, there's a lot of public information to do, a lot of kind of outreach to do and, and education. And the public really needs to believe that you guys, you know, that, that the organization is, especially the board selectmen, is, is holding, keeping the reins as tight as possible. And, um, you know, you, you, you have to be able to do that without, sort of, you know, pull back without choking the horse. And that, 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 that's kind of a, that's kind of an art, kind of a challenge.
Ari, switching gears a little bit, um, interpersonal styles, you'll see, you know, if you do get the position, we're a pretty collaborative board up here.
Great.
But let's say, um, you get different directives from different select members here. How do you handle, um, that delicate balance between different, uh, different forces on a, on a select board?
So TA doesn't work for one board member. I mean, the chairman probably is the first among equals in terms of day-to-day sort of coordination direction. But, but there, there really needs to be consensus. So, um, you know, I, I, and, and this, by the way, was a, a challenge that I ran into in, in other places. Um, you know, um, is this being, being recorded?
Yes, it is, just so you know, this is recorded.
All right, thank you, um, in other places. So, um, you know, it, it's important to set, to, to kind of establish from the outset the understanding that, um, that, you know, the understanding that, you know, listen, as you, I'm your town administrator, but I am viewed the board selectman's town administrator. And, um, I'll do bring every, and my, my primary client, um, is this, the board selectman is an entity and then also the town, uh, is a corporate entity. Um, it is not, you know, any one of you. So, um, what, what, you know, there needs to be that kind of mutual understanding that, um, yeah, it's okay to, you know, give a call, ask a question, say you got a concern, whatever, that, that's fine, you know, of course you're going to do that. But in terms of like saying, you know, trying to think like a specific policy direction that really ought to be handled, you know, through, through the, through the, the, the formal board process.
And then dovetailing on that, um, can you give us an example of some conflict resolution that you've done? And, um, what kind of, you could speak in generalities if you need to, but what's conflict did you face and how did you see your way through it?
So it's been my experience that if you, um, allow something to fester without confronting it. And I don't mean confronting it in a hostile manner, but, but without addressing it. Um, then, um, it generally just gets worse. Um, because everybody kind of retreats to their corners, positions become calcified and everybody's kind of, you know, everyone's in their bunker throwing rocks at the other side. Um, so, uh, I believe in kind of open honesty and transparency. If I had, you know, board member A tell me, I want you, you know, board member B is wrong, I want you to do this. The board member B says, I want you to do that, board member A is wrong. Then the next thing, then, then what I'm going to do is say to the board, you know, uh, is, is, um, probably in a, in a, start by doing it in a reasonable, discreet manner with a, with an email or something to the board that says, okay, so we have this issue, here's some disagreement on this, how do you want to handle this? Um, talk to the chairman, see if you want to handle it through a, through a, you know, you, you have open meeting law requirements, so you don't want to, you know, do things privately. So you say, you know, do you want to handle it on the, through a, um, through the meeting? If it can be handled executive board, that's fine. But if not, then, you know, then you have to talk about it. And that's okay, that's democratic process. So, um, but it's not, you know, it's, the, the worst thing that can happen is to, is for a town administrator, any town administrator, to allow it to be kind of fall upon their shoulders, that they have to be the one to act, that, that they are responsible for, um, you know, sure, they're responsible for facilitating it, but everybody, everybody should be a grown-up, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
And then in the same vein, Ari, let's say, uh, not, it's not with the board, let's say we have a department that's not buying in or, or, you know, putting up walls. How would you handle, um, that situation if you had a, a, a department, say, that's not buying into the, the team you're trying to?
So it, it probably depends on whether we view that as a performance issue or whether you view that as just a kind of a counseling issue, just talking, you know, um, this person doesn't like that person, whatever, and how, you know, I guess, I, my, my, my strategy is basically the same. I want to, you know, it's a little easier in that case to get them to, to them together and a closed, with the door closed and say, you know, let's talk this out, figure out how we're going to deal with this, because, you know, we're a small organization here. We don't really have room for a lot of extra baggage when it comes to things. So, uh, we need to find a way to kind of address it and move forward and resolve it. Um, I have had situations where I've had to put two department heads in a room and I said to them, we're not leaving until we figure this out. You know, and, and eventually they do, because nobody likes sitting in a room with someone they like, don't like for very long.
People want to go home.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I, I have a couple of questions, kind of, actually a good segue, uh, operations and oversight, and I'll skip ahead. Um, you mentioned, I just want to make sure I understand, what is your approach to working with department heads and ensuring accountability during your tenure here? I think you mentioned that you like to be out and about every other week, twice a month, something like that. You have department meeting heads and in between the staff meetings and that sort of thing?
Yes, so, um, regular staff meetings. Um, and, you know, this, I don't want to presuppose what works best for this organization, but what has worked well for me in the past is, um, sort of bi-weekly meetings, every other week with, with, with individual department heads and dispersed on the off, on the off week with regular staff meetings. The staff meetings are important because you, because again, you're trying to get everybody to collaborate. So you got to get, you should, you need to get everybody around the table together. One-on-ones don't work for that. But one-on-ones are important because you want to be able to kind of, you know, know what's going on, having sure everybody's communicating with each other. They, yes, some things a department head doesn't want to share with the entire group. Why would they? I don't blame them, you know, so, and get, make sure they have that, that, that channel to me if they, if they need to have it. Um, hopefully, you know, eventually that becomes, I, 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 I always have those meetings, but, but in some ways, hopefully they eventually become a little bit, um, a little bit passe, because people just talk anyway.
Sure.
But, um, you know, and the staffing, I think over time, the staff meetings become more and more important. Because, you know, you just, you know, the, 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 the director of aging and the police chief or the fire chief maybe don't talk as much as they should, you know, that kind of thing. Even though they have, they have issues that need to cross collaborate on. And then this, you want to make sure that hat, that happens.
And how do you assess and improve operational efficiency? You're a numbers guy, how do you maximize efficiency in, in tight times and staffing issues? And how do you improve operational efficiency?
Um, you know, it's, it's, to a certain degree, it's an ROI question, it's a return on investment question. Um, so, you know, a lot of organizations, or, sometimes in an organization, you'll have, um, staff that does things the way they do things because they've always done them that way. And, um, that's usually where your greatest opportunities for efficiency come from. Um, there could also be, uh, because this, sometimes those, those, you know, ignore technological changes. They'll, they'll ignore, um, uh, you know, changes in the staffing profile, skill set, you know, and so on. And so you may have opportunities here to kind of cross-train and get people to be doing things a little bit differently, more efficiently.
Correct.
Um, and that just requires an active eye in the air, making sure, and, you know, making sure that you have department heads who are engaged in that as well. Because, you know, um, oh, I don't know, you guys don't have a DPW, I know you have.
We do not.
Yeah, but, I was going to use a DPW example, that's always a good example. DPW is a good example because DPW, because DPW guys deal with, you know, and, and, you know, big equipment and so on. And they usually have a lot of cross-training opportunities, things like that. Um, but, but, but any department where you have, um, something like that, where you can kind of gain more efficiency. Sometimes you can't, sometimes you need to have, you just need to have this many cops on shift. You just have to, because that, that's the only way you're going to have security and safety and coverage. And if you, if you reduce, you know, your shift by one officer, you know, that could be, that could be a real problem. Fire is the same way, you can't staff an apparatus, you know, whatever. But, um, but, but there are usually things you can do to try to kind of, you know, by cross-training people, especially at the kind of white-collar clerical level and maybe the trades level, which, where, where isn't really the same type of, you know, you know, public safety kind of thing that you can, that you can find ways to, to bring about efficiencies.
Next section is going to be on communication and transparency. So how do you communicate with residents, boards and staff to maintain transparency and public confidence?
Well, the first thing I'd want to do is get a sense of what has been in place to date. Because I don't want to, you know, I, again, especially, even if I was not an interim TA, I still want to do that, but as an interim TA, I really don't want to, you know, there's, there's, it's not good for the organization to blow things up and have them blown up again.
Reinvent the wheel.
Yeah, it, yeah. Um, things are done in a way that they're done because it's worked well for a community and community is used to that. So if there are, are outreach, um, notification systems that you have in place now, whatever they may be as far, you know, whatever you use on Facebook or wherever, social media and posing and whatever else, then, um, you know, just blow those up, so you get a sense of what people are doing. Um, you look for opportunities for outreach, you try to get a sense from your, from, you know, you're managing for your board selectmen, so where you think shortcomings are and what areas need to be addressed. So if you feel like, you know, if the, the board was, if members of the board say to me, listen, I don't think we get out there enough on, you know, practically with the public to kind of engage them and like, understanding what government does, then, um, then, you know, then that was something I would look at. Um, in Lakeville, we did a series of welcome to Lakeville town government videos that we did. There are, I think you still see them on Facebook, um, that were little tours, they're like mini tours of, you know, town hall and the fire department and the police department and public works and so on. Trying to get people kind of a sense of, yeah, this is what we're doing, this is the kind of work, you know. Um, those are kind of nice, we did through public access. And, um, you know, if, if that, if that's something, if that kind of outreach is something you feel, that you feel is useful to do, probably would, that'd be a good thing to do. It's probably not the kind of thing I would feel, um, empowered on my own to do as an interim TA. But if there's a consensus that we want to go there, then that, that's fine. Um, you know, uh, if there are other ways to kind of do outreach, notification on social media and so on, I would certainly be well willing and ready to engage in that. But I'd want to get a sense of what, you know, kind of work, you all have been doing, what the, the different boards have been doing, what, you know, Cody's been doing and so on.
What, uh, what is your approach to handling public inquiries, media and public criticism in small towns and cities?
So, um, I mean, I'm, I'm used to dealing with media. Um, if, if I were to get a media inquiry, the first thing I would do is probably notify the board that there was a media inquiry about something or other. Um, um, at least the chairman, depending on what your dynamic is and what, how you all, but make sure that's communicated. Because, um, that's important, the lot, again, no surprises, you don't want to, you know, um, you don't want some, some weird story on Channel Four popping up, you know. Um, the, um, uh, I have many times in my life had sit down with members of the public who are concerned or complain, you know, or something other. I always try to give them, uh, an, an, an open forum to talk and discuss. Um, I will generally, you know, I will generally shut it down eventually if it's something that's just not reasonable and makes any sense or something out there. Um, have you, just curious, have you all had First Amendment auditors come by at all? No, lucky.
Light your tongue.
Yeah. Oh, we're recorded, I shouldn't have said anything.
Hey, yeah.
Yeah, uh, so, so I've dealt with that, we dealt with that in Watertown, we dealt with that in Lakeville and so on. It's, it's not, it's, you know, some people are a little, it's not as bad as it sounds. There, there generally is people that want to come around and, and film everything. And as long as you label, we're considered employees only, they can't go back there and then, and you're fine. So long as you prepare for that. Um, so, yeah, I'm, I'm very accustomed to dealing with the press and, and members of the public and things like that.
All right, switching gears on you, Ari, um, how quickly would it take you if you were named our interim to get up to speed? You know, I, I know it's a challenge, uh, because you essentially have to hit the ground running, but how could you, uh, I guess coordinate, we have Cody, you know, the luxury of Cody for another week. Um, how do you see that process of?
Well, first of all, I'm available right now, so there's that. Um, I, um, I don't have any obligations in that respect, you know.
Okay.
Um, I, uh, I would imagine that Cody and I would do some Vulcan mind meld and, and sort of get things for, you know, download what, what I need to know and so on. Um, and, um, you know, I, I would, so that'd be one aspect of it. I think the basics of the job, you know, what a TA does, I know what a TA does, so I kind of know. So, while I may not have any of the answers, I know what the, I mean, a lot of the, I know a lot of the questions. So I think, you know, within a week or two, I think I probably know what's going on.
Correct.
Um, the, the, the biggest challenge I think would be for, for anybody, whether it's me or, or anyone else in, in an interim TA or a TA position, would be the, the thing that's like a, like a treadmill you have to, like a moving treadmill to jump on is the, is the, the, the board meeting process. Um, because just, there, there are things being worked on right now for a board meeting, next one or the one after that, that, you know, I, that, that I don't know about. And, um, the, the, and I don't want to be an impediment to the process. So some things kind of have to be allowed to move of their own accord in the way that, in the way that they're planned to do so. So it's, it's a little bit like jumping on a treadmill, you know.
It's a good analogy. Um, and then circling back, I think you believe, uh, I think I believe you said that you're not at this time interested in the full-term.
Right.
Um, position, full-time position, excuse me. Um, and then, uh, how are you as far as being able to commit to us to a timeframe? You know, hopefully we have an amazing candidate walk in.
Right.
And, and banging out of the park and, and we can, and move on, but I, you know, it's a fluid situation. So I guess my question is, is availability and.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, so I don't have the limitations that you'd have for someone who's retired.
Mm-hmm.
I don't have that. Um, and I, I don't have another position. I'd be lying to you if I didn't tell you that, um, that, um, I'll, will get around to looking at permanent positions. But I also understand that if I were to, you know, take on something like this, that I'm committing to you all for some period of time.
Sure.
So I think we have to have the conversation. I think, I believe the advertisement said three to five months.
Yeah.
Um, I salute you if you're able to get this done that fast. And maybe it will, maybe you are, maybe you'll get great, but that would be, that'd be pretty good.
Yeah.
You're doing three to five months. So, um, you know, if you're able to do that, great. If not, then, you know, I'll do the best I can to kind of keep going, but, you know, support you all.
So just to clarify, you think you, you'd be able to be here, you know, three to five months?
Mm-hmm, yeah, I think so.
Okay, and then as far as hours, have you thought of, uh, as far as hours work?
So the only, the only caveat I make on hours is that, um, I, it's a bit of a distance for me. I live in Dedham.
Yep.
So I don't know that getting here at seven in the morning is realistic.
Yep.
Um, maybe more like eight or nine, that kind of thing.
Okay.
Um, other than that, I don't see, really see a problem.
And we don't, we don't work Fridays, just so, the building's not up Friday, so, there's that as well.
Yeah, yeah. But other, other than that one thing, I don't particularly want to leave my house at six in the morning. Um, it's, it's probably fine.
And then as far as, let's say there's an important meeting coming up that night?
Of course.
You'd be able to be available?
Yeah, I've been doing this for decades, it's, it's, yeah, I understand, I understand that.
All right.
Every two weeks we have the board meeting right now.
Yep. All right, um, that's all I had here. Does the board have any other questions for Ari? Ari, you have any, I mean, now that we've kind of circled around.
Not so much, I think we could, you know, I, I, coming into this, coming into this interview, I was thinking to myself, what areas do I want to emphasize as far as, you know, what I think are things to, to concern about? I think we touched upon most of them, the financial side especially, I'm, I am concerned about that, I'm sure it's been happening lately. Um, and, uh, and then kind of being able to act as facilitator to, to keep the ball moving forward. Um, I, I think one of the challenges for all of us will be, and whoever you hire in this position, will be, um, to make sure that things are not stagnating, but also not, but also that, that thing that should be left to the next administrator are left for the next administrator. And that may take conversations, should this be left to the next administrator or not, you know, we, we work that through. Um, you know, I am flexible and available and, and committed. And, um, I think that, uh, this could be a, a good sort of mutual little synergy here in terms of where I am and, and where, and what your needs are, so.
Great, great. And just to let you know on timeline, we, we do hope to make our decision this evening.
Oh.
So we don't want to string anyone along, so as soon as, uh, you know, the board discusses, we will, uh, have a decision to you, uh, one way or another by the end of the evening tonight.
Wonderful, okay, wonderful. All right, well, thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thanks, Ari. All right, time for the second handshake.
Sorry about the door.
I know. Tuesday, July first, uh, twenty twenty-five, uh, we are reconvening after a quick bathroom break. Uh, we had two of our candidates in for our interim town administrator position. Um, and now the board, we will essentially, um, deliberate and debate here as to which candidate we like and which candidate we think will be a good fit for the town of Halifax. I don't know how the board wants to proceed, do you want to have, have that in or what do you guys want to do?
I mean, I, I could open, unless she wants to chair.
You want to, go ahead.
I, I was encouraged by the two candidates, uh, each, uh, independent of the other. I thought they both had their strengths. Um, I liked a lot of what they had to say. Uh, I believe they both touched on, um, not, they didn't say this, but not rocking the boat, steering the ship, steadying the tide was the general message I heard from both.
Mm-hmm.
I also liked, um, when Ari said that, um, you know, some things, some decisions might be better left to the permanent town administrator.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, some changes might be better pushed off till there was somebody permanent in place. They both touched on that, the aspect. They both touched on that, the aspect. I thought they were both strong with different strengths. I think, I was obviously quite impressed with Ari's financial background. Some of the experience in town government, the HR aspect, the legal aspect. I thought Bob was quite strong in his background in the police, police background, the legal background, the HR background, a lot of different hats. But I did prefer Ari on the financial side of things. I think the one thing that I'm weighing out in my mind is the longer the search goes, the longer process it takes. I would lean one direction, whereas if it was a shorter timeline, I might lean in the other. I think it's no secret that although there's a million issues in town, every town has a million issues, I think the budget is pretty big. If this administrative search was expected to last until the spring, I think that sways the conversation one way. If it's more short-term, I'd probably lean the other. So that was kind of just my general thoughts.
Okay. Bill, do you have any thoughts yet?
I thought they were both great candidates, and I echo what Tom said. My concern is no contest drive on. Ari could leave, he could be stuck again. And three or five months is a short period.
Sure, yeah, that's the probably best-case scenario, yeah. Yeah, and I, again, I think they're both solid candidates. And I think, Tom, you're right, I think for different reasons. I was really impressed with Ari's financial acumen. You know, you could see it all through his resume. The guy seems very cerebral, very, very cerebral. And then you had Bob, who again, is not saying that he's not a cerebral guy, but just has a different approach to things. And maybe a couple of different positions on his resume that rounded him out a little bit. I think both would be fine. I think we're in a good position, it's like picking your favorite flavor ice cream here. But if I had to make a decision going forward, I think I would go with Bob.
That's what I was going to, I think it's getting along, it's getting along.
I mean, I'm hopeful that the process is on the shorter side. And Bob, Bob would be, I think, you know, they're equally capable in different areas, I said, but the financial acumen for Ari, I think, is kind of weighing me to one way. I would lean, a slight lean towards Bob, but I would have no problem offering it either.
Yeah.
Again, the financial aspect, which is first and foremost on my mind. Not that there are not more important issues, HR and so forth. But where we're headed as a town, I think we could really benefit from that. The timing of it is such that I'm hopeful that we have somebody permanently in place long before that financial acumen needs to be set in motion.
Sure.
If this was October, November, and we needed someone to start the budget process, I think that would be Bob's wheelhouse.
You mean Ari's?
Ari's wheelhouse.
Yeah, sure.
I think, I'm hopeful that with a permanent position on the shorter horizon, I'm hoping, I'm hoping that we can get somebody permanent in place for those budgets.
And, and again, I can't say this enough, both candidates are great. I did like with Bob where he's familiar with the lay of the land. I mean, he was around the corner in Carver and up the street in Kingston. He did have experience with a regional, our own regional school committee, you know, school region, you know, Silver Lake. So I kind of like the thought of that as well. But again, two solid candidates. And I will say, it's such a breath of fresh air compared to, you know, Cody mentioned, two and a half years ago. It just makes me feel good in my heart to know that we're getting candidates like this as opposed to what we were getting three years ago is, kudos to Halifax, that's awesome. All right, do we want to make a formal vote here? I'll entertain a motion to offer the position. I want to make sure I get his name right here.
A motion to appoint Barbara Pedes as interim town administrator, subject to successful contract negotiations and reference background check.
So moved.
Second.
All right, can we just roll call or do we just voice vote? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Passes unanimous. All right, so we will enter into executive session tonight?
Yep, so our first move into Massachusetts General Lodge, Chapter 38, Section 21, A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel in term of town administration.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, roll call executive session?
Will we return?
We will not. All right, so sorry, roll call vote. Bill?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Myself as a yes, passes unanimously. Thank you, guys, take care.
Thank you to both candidates.
Yes, thank you.